Welcome, everyone. Today is September 8th, 2022. It is 6:31. And this is the Planning Board of Akushnet. This meeting is being recorded for the Akushnet channel for YouTube, also live on Zoom. If everybody could please put their phones on silent, that would be appreciated. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and... Oh, I'm sorry. Before that, I'm gonna rewind a little bit. I'd like to have everybody introduce themselves, starting with Doug.
All right, Doug from Asa Town Planner.
Mark Francois, Chairman.
Dave DeLigman, Member.
Brian Dischamps, Member.
Rick Ellis, Vice Chairman.
Okay. Tonight is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. This is for the appointment of Commissioner Sinorizio's open term. The appointment expires on May 2023. At such time, the term will expire and will be on the annual town election ballot. Can I have a motion to open a joint meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Everybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Board of Selectmen, Kevin Gaspar.
Board of Selectmen, Robert Hinckley.
And we have to open our meeting. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have two people that are interested in the open position for the Planning Board. Unfortunately, one of the gentlemen could not be here tonight. Ms. Peter Gaiampa could not be here tonight. Sent an email saying that he couldn't make it. He had a previous appointment, but is still interested in the position. So since he is not here, I'm gonna let Stephen Boucher say any comments that he would like to, and then we could ask questions. We have...
Chairman David Wonach come into the meeting.
On the point?
He's not applying. Good move.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, Dave. Can't hear you, though. Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay. I'm gonna put myself on you.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Stephen Boucher. I live at 5 Iron Street in Akushnet. Grew up in Akushnet. Went to Akushnet schools. Lived here the majority of my life, majority of my adult life. And I served on a Board of Public Works for six years as a member. And now I'm interested in the Planning Board at this point. I've got a special interest in the master planning. And currently, I'm employed, or have been employed, for several years as a project representative slash clerk of works for public projects. So I'm pretty well versed in public work, as well as the town's infrastructure from being on a Board of Public Works with water and sewer. I guess I'd like that, like that the opportunity to serve on the Planning Board. It's definitely of interest of mine. It has been since I left the Board of Public Works. Anybody got any questions for me?
Not particularly. I mean, you, both of you had a chance to sit in on a meeting that we had, I'll call it, serious discussions about a couple of matters. It didn't scare you away, obviously.
Not at all.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
No real questions? I mean, the Board of Public Works experience seems good. I mean, you're used to making decisions that some people may like and some people may not like, which is what happens here.
It's not always a favorable position.
Luke?
You realize you have to run for reelection come whatever it is?
Yeah, back in May, yeah.
And you intend to do that?
Yes. Yeah.
So, Ligman?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. I've read through both of the individuals. I would say this, that the matter who gets the nomination, you know, I think we have two good candidates. I know Mr. Boucher has served on a Board of Public Works, and he's absolutely correct. He understands the town's infrastructure. So I think that would be huge on behalf of the Planning Board when it moves forward on some of the bigger developments, i.e. or, you know, housing that's been talked about by Mr. Pimentel, the planner. So that infrastructure experience, to me, is very favorable to the Planning Board.
Okay. I have read both of the letters of interest, yours and Mr. Gaiampa's. I think you're both qualified. Mr. Gaiampa is also in the construction trade, from what I gather, somebody who also would understand the ins and outs of the Planning Board, same as yourself. I think you're both very qualified. Mr. Gaiampa put his application in his letter of interest early on, yours a little bit later. But besides that, I think you're both highly qualified. Is there a motion from...
For nomination?
For nomination?
Usually you have to come from pretty silent, but I'm more than happy to jump in.
Please.
To make a motion to appoint Stephen Boucher to the Planning Board for the term that, which obviously expires till the next elections, because that's all the county's for. It's not five years.
No. Is there a second?
No.
Second, Dave.
All in favor? By roll call? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Dave?
I'll go aye.
I'll go aye. The Planning Board has voted?
Roll call vote. Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Myself is a aye. Mr. Wonach, can you hear us?
Aye.
Well, it looks like it's unanimous. Oh, wait a minute. Is everybody in agreeance? All in favor? All in all eyes? So it's unanimous?
Yep. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Amber, I think he pronounces his last name. Just if he's gonna be watching the meeting, I would just tell him the same thing that I'm telling Mr. Boucher is. And I've told everybody that's come in as multiple candidates want to be appointed in joint meetings, you have the opportunity to be on the ballot come the next general election. So if he's that interested and he wants to run for the position, him and Mr. Boucher could both go for that. Anybody in the general public can do it, but he's got that opportunity, as any candidate would have that opportunity to run for that position. So I would encourage everybody and anybody who's interested in doing it and has the whole heart and faith into the town of Akushnet, get out there and run for positions.
Well said.
So just for, you won't be able to join for like today, so for next meeting, you'll just have to...
I gotta go on 7:00 PM.
Yeah, 7:00 PM, get sworn in, do your ethics, all the ethics.
Yeah. Paid peace.
Familiar with that process?
All right.
Back in the day.
And then our next meeting's gonna be September 22nd, so it's your word.
There's nothing new as far as public hearings starting tonight, so you'll be free to join in the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, hit the ground running, so to speak.
Okay.
Now I close out the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Wonach, you still there?
Aye.
We're all done, Mr. Wonach. Have a safe flight.
Oh, you give the thumbs up.
Thanks, guys.
I can't see. He was there. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
I don't need to change anything. Yeah, I would say so. I mean, I'm assuming that he's gotta be sworn in. I mean, certainly, you're certainly welcome to stay.
Oh, I'll be there to stay, because I gotta catch up on... I'll be in touch with Mr. Pimentel during the week.
Absolutely. I'll get you my sworn-in number. We can start communicating back and forth, get some things worked out. We do need to make a motion to close the joint meeting on planning boards on.
That's what I was wondering. Motion to close the joint meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now, moving along. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes of the August 25th meeting?
I make a motion except the...
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Um, discussion.
Discussion.
I just wanna change a couple of words.
Okay.
It did change the dynamics of a sentence, you know? Page one, third sentence from the bottom, existing street or whether or not of weather. And page two, there should be a was on the fourth line down on the discussion for Park Drive, where it says, "It appears that the person there was leasing the land." It's minor, but it's just, I don't know, just a stickler for...
So...
With those two changes, I would...
No, that's fine. I'll make a motion to approve with changes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just give you that. I forgot the second one, sorry.
Sign this one out. Make sure it's one on the second.
Yeah, the last page is one.
Okay. Moving along. There's no public hearings tonight. Lake Street, okay. So A and R 2022-1, for land on Zero Lake Street, Cushing Mass, River Heart, Plan Surveyors, Middleborough Mass, drawing for long plan, Cranberry Trust, and Brandon Acres Nominee Trust. The plans were not submitted in time, so they are going to reschedule for the September 22nd meeting. Next is, we're gonna continue the discussion of the Park Drive Soul Project, Sincarfa Access Rights Options Request for Public Hearing. Is there supposed to be somebody here from Sincarfa?
Yeah, there's a gentleman tonight. And just a little clarification on that. I do have a meeting tomorrow with Town Council and Jamie Kelly, Town Administrator. We're gonna just speak a little bit more with Town Council, get some clarity on some points I hated to issue and opinions he had issued for the Planning Board, just to see how to proceed moving forward. Tentatively, right now, we do have a public hearing scheduled for them. But if, in the meantime, if a different decision is rendered from Town Council, I will be in touch with the Planning Board members to let them know.
What's the decision? What is it we're waiting for from Town Council?
Who's clarity on whether or not we need to hold a public hearing and then the appeal process, and if there is appeal process following?
What was set up for public hearing, two weeks from tonight?
Yes, but if something changes, we can change that, be able to cancel.
Have they submitted detailed plan on what?
Not yet.
What's the cutoff for the next meeting?
It'll be the Friday before.
Anyone here from Sincarfa who would like to address the board?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Brandon Kowski from Sincarfa. Thanks for having us on tonight to continue the discussion from the last meeting. Since we last spoke, you know, the request from the board is that we survey our property limits at the access drive location, and we have done so. So on that note, like to further the discussion to understand any questions or comments the board may have after reviewing the property limits survey.
Did any of you gentlemen have the opportunity to drive out there and take a look?
I did.
I did too.
No, I go first. I mean, at this point, it is a small change. It does look like there is an opportunity for the building inspector to approve it as a change, but we need the meeting with Town Council tomorrow that Doug mentioned before we make the final decision on what we need to do there. Now, I take it that that 22 feet is, that is the only location that you are able to put an access drive in that area? I mean, you can't use the whole, I believe it was about 40 feet or so?
That's correct. Yeah, and that's, it's within the current limits our landlord owns, so. And then, and we also, I believe, called up the fire chief, and they confirmed that the minimum area width it would need is 16 feet. So we are, they are satisfying that requirement.
Then really, at this point, we just need to nail down what the procedure is to move forward, and that's, again, what the meeting with Town Council, Doug is gonna have tomorrow is gonna be, so.
When I looked at it, I had some concerns. I counted seven mature trees that are over the property line to the right, that are probably a foot to two feet over the line. And you got a three-foot cut, looks like, in grade change, because the hill goes uphill towards the trees. So I'm wondering how you intend to accomplish that. If you're gonna cut the grade down two and a half, three feet, you're gonna need a retaining wall, because you're trying to occupy the whole stretch, 20 feet. And if you do a cut like that through those, the root systems, the mature trees, there's an issue there. So I'm wondering, there's also a utility pole, three feet from the right lot line, which, even if you're using 16 feet, that thing's gonna be right in the way. So I'm wondering, you know, if you've looked at all of those issues, will you get permission from the abutter to the right to cut down all those mature trees? And if not, how would you, how are you gonna deal with that?
Well, I'll tackle your questions one by one. Regarding the trees, we will locate them and determine if we can notch around them or if they need to be removed entirely. And then we'll recommend some sort of, I don't wanna say replacement, because we don't know the extent of how much needs to be removed, right? So we have to locate them first to see what we can do to preserve them or to notch around them. So we will do that. Regarding the utility pole, it's going to have to be relocated, and we've already kind of started that discussion with the utility to investigate that, because it's encroaching on the access to our landlord's property.
I would suggest you decide or figure out what you're gonna do with those trees. They are, they are huge. They are not insignificant trees.
Understood. And, you know, our original permit approval contemplated that they would be removed, because the original limits of our access were obviously larger than what we're currently going to, right? So we will...
I think we, I think we understand that, but we also found, we also thought at that time that you would have the right to utilize the whole right-of-way, you know, for your construction, which would have made those trees moot. You would clearly have had the right to remove them and put your accessway in. That does not seem to be the case right now. And I think part of what you're gonna have to do at our next meeting is explain to us how you're gonna, how you're gonna deal with those things. And, you know, whether it's a easement or an agreement with the abutter on the right-hand side. Is that, that would be the east side, right?
Yes.
Yeah, on the east side or not. Just tell us what you wanna do. I mean, that will, that will have some impact on whether or not we and our Town Council feel that a public hearing is gonna be required. I mean, it's gonna, those things are so big, it's gonna be difficult to do a cutout around them and even maintain the 16-foot way that the fire chief is asking for. By aye.
Have you looked at the site since the stakes were put in the ground?
I'm sorry, is that a question to myself?
Yes. Have you yourself looked at?
No, I haven't been out to the site since about a month ago. So I have not, I've seen the photos and the survey data, put it on our drive.
You should go and look at it, because what Rick's saying was correct. When you had the 40 feet to work with, there was enough room to build a 20-foot road, and you could avoid the trees. But what I'm trying to tell you is, when you go out there and you look at the stakes and you look right down the line, it's clear as day, there are a couple of big mature trees that are on your side. No problem. You can take them out. But there are seven that are clearly over the line. You can't touch them without permission from the abutter. So you're either gonna have to provide that authorization in order to cut them down to us. And if you're not, I don't see how you can cut that grade in, you know, two feet off a tree that's like this. There are seven of them. I mean, one of them, maybe one is, or two are pines, but some of those were oaks. And they're pretty big. And I don't think you can just gouge three feet of earth right next to them and not compromise the trees.
I mean, the pines are bad in that respect, too, because they have a shallow root system that spreads out a long way. So if you compromise 30% or 40% of that root system of the pine, well, it may not be so stable anymore. The other, the other thing, too, is before, when you proposed the 20-foot way, the 20-foot road within the 40-foot way, I mean, the assumption would be that that would have followed the centerline of that, that old way. Right now, the way you're gonna have to build the road, it's right next to one of the abutters, to the abutters lawn. So, you know, it's not, there's more, there seems to be more impact there than there seemed to be with the previous proposal.
Okay. Understand and appreciate the feedback. You know, we have to locate the trees to see exactly what the extent of that impact is, so then we'll work to do it.
I think you need to really look at the impact on the adjacent property, you know, because the road is gonna now be so close to the property line. And I would be interested to hear what, you know, what you guys are planning relative to that.
Sorry, what was the last part of that? You said one?
You know, what's the plan? You know, I mean, I, do I want logging trucks running within two feet of the edge of my lawn? I really don't. You know, there's, there's gonna, the biggest, to me, the biggest impact here is going to be when they're logging the parcel off. You know, there's gonna be a lot of heavy truck traffic through there to get rid of the stumps, to get rid of the trees, the branches, all that stuff, even if it's just chipped trucks and everything's chipped up. I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't want those trucks running up within two feet of my lawn. And that's, especially now, if the weather is inclement and it gets slippery, those trucks are gonna be all over the place. I think there's something, I'm just saying that that's something I think you're gonna need to address also at the next meeting, besides the issue with the trees.
Well, and to the point of your concern about, you know, the neighbor, I mean, we, you know, we've been working to put a fence up on either side, which we discussed the last meeting, which we said we would do to eliminate that disturbance, right? So that is something we're still planning to do.
Come in with, come in...
Drawing time to share with you, so.
Come in with the detail of the fence and show us exactly what you wanna do.
Look, go take a look at that site. Look at the grade. It rises up. It's flat where the old gravel road is, but then there's a big rise right where the trees are. And I think that's problematic. You need to look at it.
Yeah, we've seen it. And, you know, we actually have our engineer on the line to kind of speak to that as well. But we, you know, based on the information we've gathered from the field survey, we don't perceive it to be a big issue. But I understand your concerns. And, you know, Rob, if you could speak to the grading issue?
Sure. I would like to see any significant tree that's going to be taken down or is close to that edge of road to be located on the plan. And we'll make the decision whether it's insignificant or not at that time. You know, be prepared to discuss that at the next meeting.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Rob Kowski from Weston Sampson. Some of you may remember me from the original permitting through for this project a year or so ago. But I, looking at the topography, I know you had mentioned you think there's about a three-foot elevation difference within that roadway next to that eastern lawn. Looking at the topography, it shows it to be flatter than three feet. So what we're gonna try to do is the locations where we put stakes in. I'm hoping that our surveyors also collected elevation data from those points. Excuse me. So if they did, we can look at those elevations and get a better sense on, you know, how much elevation change there is from the eastern side to the western side of where that road is proposed. So that's something that we can certainly take a closer look at. But we're hoping that it's a little bit flatter based on some of the topographic data we have, that we wouldn't need a retaining wall. But it's something we could certainly take a closer look at.
I would say have the surveyor pick up certainly any tree that's bigger than eight or 10 inches in diameter, so we can see, you know, where they are and what's gonna have to come down in order to put that, I guess, proposed 16-foot wide way in there.
Will there be any issues getting tractor-trailers in and out of that corridor, we'll call it, 20-foot wide?
We've worked with our contractor to develop a plan to. We have an off-site location located in an adjacent town where another project is being built. And we're gonna be using that as a staging yard for certain equipment and materials. We've also spoke with most of our vendors and modules and vendors. Ranking material will be coming out of vehicles that can, that can enter and exit the site.
It would be good if you could overlay a turning diagram for the trucks and trailers that will be entering and leaving there to see if they're gonna encroach on, again, that neighbor's property. I mean, they're 16 feet plus an inside radius for some of these bigger trailers is maybe tough to accommodate between that 22 feet that you own and the paved road that's out there on Park Drive. So I think that's something you need to be prepared to show us also.
Yeah, we actually had the folks at Weston Sampson do a turning radius for the max, for, you know, a large piece of, the largest piece of equipment that could enter. And we're structuring our deliveries accordingly for materials to the site that way.
Yeah, just have them put it on the same plan and show up to us.
Yeah, that's actually the dream we have, but we just, it wasn't ready to share tonight.
Okay.
We're anticipating that.
Okay.
But even if you brought small trucks, smaller trucks in to get the materials there, you still have to bring in large equipment, like an excavator, front-end loader, don't you?
So there is. I mean, there is some equipment that is potentially going to have to get dropped off in front of the site and then walk its way in. And the disturbance, you know, we can quantify to being a number of days as opposed to continuous weeks or months of construction. So in the grand scheme of what will be entering and exiting the site, it is a very small percentage of those types of deliveries, but necessary nonetheless and would be required, you know, regardless of the width in some instances.
I mean, what's the volume of the trucks that are gonna remove the wood products from that site? I mean, that's not an insignificant, you know, amount of traffic.
It is not an insignificant amount.
And normally, you know, I understand the thing that you're saying about, you know, putting equipment, you know, on the road and then moving it in. But, I mean, I'm envisioning a train of these trucks that have big trailers on that carry wood chips. And those things don't turn in small spaces. And there's gonna be a lot of them. There's a lot of material, whether it's logs, stumps, or chips, that have to come off of that site to make it ready for your solar array. Be prepared to make that part of the discussion, too, when you come back in.
Yeah, understood. And, you know, we're, as I mentioned, we're working with our contractors to accommodate, you know, the site conditions with deliveries.
How many?
The logging trucks, I'm sorry?
I'll be, I'll, all right, I'll make it real simple. How many tractor-trailers do you, do you plan on having to leave that site to clear it off and make it ready for your solar panels? I don't expect you to have that number on the top of your head now, but I would ask you to talk to your contractors to see what that, what that number is.
Okay.
It's more than 20 trucks. I know that.
It certainly is more than 20 trucks. Yes, it's very heavily wooded site, so, you know, we're not in... Yes, it's very heavily wooded sites, so, you know, we're not in, that part of the work though is, you know, pending they're moving efficiently in there, which, you know, clearing work usually on a site like this should move pretty quick. We're talking weeks here of, you know, truck traffic during the normal working hours of the day, not at all hours of the day or at, you know, times when people are at home and not out of work.
All right, I understand. Can they make the turn?
How many acres are you clearing?
Understand the ask, understand.
How many acres are gonna get cleared, Scott?
I don't have the figure exactly off the top of my head, but, I mean, it's at least... What do we got, like in thirties, I think?
Yeah, I was thinking thirty to forty acres is what I think.
I think it's a little over forty, I think it's over forty, sorry, they're over forty, it's forty to fifty.
Even more. Again, you know, let's get a count on these trucks. It's more important now than ever where that access is so restricted and it's going to be so close to, is it forty-one or forty-seven Park Drive? I don't, I don't remember which number it is. It's, it just makes that more difficult and more invasive than it was with the previous proposal.
Okay, we got that down. Do you gentlemen have anything else you'd like to ask?
No, I just, I guess, when do you intend to submit a plan in detail? And I know we're asking for more information now, but can we get that in one week in advance of the next meeting?
I mean, we'll work to address the comments and, you know, try to circulate a draft maybe earlier than later. I don't, I don't see that being, I don't see that being an issue, not at all.
I mean, we're, until we see your final proposal and get some discussion on those things that we talked about tonight, we're not gonna move forward, you know, and I know you guys would like to move forward. Get the information in and then, then we'll act on it. And we'll also have the benefit of an additional meeting with town council on how we should move forward with the thing. Okay?
Understood. Thank you very much for the, for the time and the feedback.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Did I talk too much, Dave? I tried, I tried, I tried to keep it shorter for you.
I don't have the bike, so it doesn't matter.
Just know what I want you to take it next time, but this is me. It's gonna get cooler as time goes on.
I know it's not a public meeting and we're not allowed to speak, but can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I was a little confused when Doug talked about meeting with some people tomorrow and is this gonna go to a public hearing? Or are you gonna decide after you meet with them if it's gonna be a public hearing?
Oh yeah, I have to speak with town council to kind of get a clearer answer from them on how to proceed with this.
But there's so many questions here, shouldn't the public have a chance to speak like they spoke today?
And that'll all be things that are addressed in the meeting tomorrow with town council.
Okay. Because we heard them and I'd like you to hear us, that's all. Thank you very much.
My opinion, the two weeks from tonight, we should have a hearing and whether we decide it's a minor project modification or not, we're asking for information. I hope we're not overridden by town council because what's the point in having a planning board if we can't manage what's being proposed, right?
And all your points were legit because...
You know, I'd be appalled if we were told we, it's out of our hands.
There are huge trees there.
This is pretty significant to me of a change.
There's a huge grade difference between the property...
Yeah, I don't agree with the gentleman.
There's a huge grade.
There's a change like that.
There's huge trees there and it's definitely an issue that should be addressed and we should be able to speak as they were able to speak. I would appreciate it if it did get back to the planning board and it didn't get overridden tomorrow or when Doug speaks to the...
Doug will make that known to town council when they meet tomorrow.
I appreciate that very much.
Yep, and we'll get back to you on what they've decided. Whatever town council decides is the way this board's gonna go, and they'll have a meeting tomorrow.
So you mean if the town council decides that it's...
Well, we'll know better what our options are, you know, after tomorrow. And we don't have, we don't have that information yet. We don't have the final plan with the information on the trees, the turning radiuses, the amount of the truck traffic, of truck traffic that's gonna happen there during the, to me, I will, I'm not trying to lowball the rest of the project, but to me, the biggest disruption to neighbors is going to be while they're taking the trees, the stumps, and the brush off of the property. That's, that to me is the worst time. That's why I'm more interested in it.
Is it, is it, you know, when we, some people say it's a small, minor change to the entrance. It isn't because they're talking about going in a twenty-foot entrance now when they wanted thirty-seven feet in order to bring the big tractors in like you discussed and...
No, you're speaking to the choir here, I think, you know.
There's seventeen, I agree. It's not a six-foot change like they're gonna propose, we're going from twenty-six to twenty. They're going from thirty-seven to twenty.
And it's right next, and one edge of the road is right next to, you know, somebody's lawn. Are you the gentleman that owns that?
Yeah.
Is it forty-seven or forty-one?
He has forty-seven, I have forty-one.
Okay, forty-seven is the one that the road is close to?
Forty-seven's the one on the right facing the road.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, forty-one. Forty-one is the one that the road is close to.
If you're facing the road, looking down the road, forty-seven on your right, forty-one on your left.
You're the guy with all the trees.
It's forty-one. It's forty-one is the one that this access road would be very close to.
Right.
And you're one.
Yes. I didn't mean to interrupt the meeting, I just had a couple of questions because I, you know, we really would like to speak as they spoke in a public meeting.
You know, the next meeting's the twenty-second and we'll have to see what the proponent shows us and we'll have to see what town council tells us, so, and we'll move from there.
Would I be able to reach out to you tomorrow and find out what town council says? Is the meeting tomorrow or...
I'm not gonna be able to give you any specifics on what town council has to say at that time. It's more of a determination of the planning board to help be happy to share whatever information I can with you.
Okay. When they make a decision if it's gonna go forward to the next meeting on the twenty-second, is that it? Is that what you're telling me?
Yep.
Okay.
Doug, just ask town council what you can share and what you can't. And then when they call you, you'll have authorization if you just...
We all very much appreciate that.
Okay. Anyone else have a question?
Just so, just a quick comment. My mother's property is forty-seven, my stepfather. As far as we knew, we owned pretty much up to that telephone pole, and now it sounds like they're taking two feet more from her property, so we just have some issues with that, and I'm not sure how that would get resolved, but just something else to take into consideration.
The pole might not, usually poles are pretty, somehow they get pretty close to property lines.
Not always, but not always, yes.
Sometimes, yeah.
There's a permanent marker that's pretty much right next to that pole.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Like a stone marker or a concrete bound?
Concrete bound.
Well, when, what I expect to see is a detailed topographical plan of that stretch, showing, just like Rick said, all the trees, twenty-inch oak, ten-inch pine on your property and on the ones that they're gonna take down, and how they're gonna address the grade issues. They should show the pole, edge of pavement, and if there's a marker there, they should recognize it. All these things should be shown. It's standard protocol. If they don't show it, then they're gonna have to come back, because that's what I expect for this, is a detailed topographical, you know, site feature plan of that little stretch two hundred feet. Not little, but important.
Plus, they're gonna have to demonstrate how that truck with that, I don't know, forty-three or fifty-foot, fifty-three-foot-long trailer behind it is gonna make that right turn out of a sixteen-foot driveway and not go on your property. You know, I mean, that's, that's an issue. They're gonna have to, they're going to have to convince us that that can be done. I'm not sure that it can, just, but that's just by I. You know, I, I don't have the turning radius diagrams overload, overlaid on the access road and the property lines and all that stuff, but they're gonna have to have that in order to make the case whether it is a minor change or not.
This is a long way from being resolved.
Yeah.
We're waiting on a lot of confusion for them. We're gonna get information from town council. We'll keep you updated as best we can with whatever we can. Just feel free to reach out to Doug and Doug will tell you what he's able to tell you. But for right now, let's just wait until the, if they get all their information in by the, within the next week before the next meeting in two weeks, then we'll continue there. And I don't know if, I mean, I see it continuing. So sit tight, keep, keep, keep in touch and we'll get what we can to you as soon as we can.
We will. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay. Doug, do you have something for us for Terre Development LLC roadway improvement plan, guaranteed cash assuring?
Yeah, I just have a, we approved, this meeting, we agreed thirty-five thousand for cash escrow, a few questions for roadway improvement fee for Bradford Street. Talked to the developer, they had agreed on it, uh, two meetings ago, two or three meetings about this time. We just need to sign the document. Terre will be coming to by my office to sign it himself as well. So I have the document, press to secure that.
What's, they gotta do drainage anyways?
Uh, it's like the top coat of the roadway, and then there's some minor drainage things that need to be approved, so, or finished, I should say.
Yeah, I'll just say, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion to accept?
We, we already made a motion at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did. It's just signing the document at this point.
All boxes passed. All right, next on the agenda, we have a discussion, Morton Lane A and R roadway improvements. See anybody here from Morton Lane? Doug, is there something you'd like to discuss with us?
Uh, I mean, not in particular, I know, so there is just ongoing development out of the site. I guess the best way to put it is the planning board had approved an A and R plan of land and roadway improvement project back in, I wanna say February or March.
February.
Yep, they had came before the planning board asking for modifications to the roadway. After taking a look at what Morton Lane looks like, it's not a publicly accepted road, it's a private way, the planning board had approved the change from it being asphalt to gravel. So at this time, the septic system's been built, the house is built, the roadway's built, but talking to all the boards and speaking with the property owner, they're looking, my understanding, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe they're looking for amendments to their NOI through Concom. And there's just some grading issues and so the project's been passed between hands from one engineer to another engineer and how that's affected stormwater calculations long-term for the project, it being a highly sensitive area, very extremely close to wetlands and extremely close to the boundary line. And just wanted to open if the planning board or any of the members had anything to say or wanted to discuss on it.
I haven't looked at it. It doesn't look like the hammerhead is built.
Yeah.
The, there's a dog leg to the right, it just looks like there's loam there, like they just ran right through the woods to build the septic, and there's no formal fire turnaround fire access that was shown on the plan. So that was the first thing that stuck out to me. The second thing is the site plan that they asked us to wave the pavement on, show the drainage pump to get the water from the road into it.
It had a Cape Cod burn on it. That was never discussed, that was never told to us when we were voting on it. Nobody said that there was supposed to be a Cape Cod burn there that was gonna, uh, turn all the water into their, attend to their drainage. So now that might have some effect on the stormwater and the drainage, I don't know.
I'm not, if they, I saw a Concom meeting where they were asking to, it seemed like they were asking to, it never really got off on its track because the engineer was on vacation, a new engineer.
Yep.
It seemed to me that they're, it's going in a direction where they wanna wave all stormwater.
Not a hundred percent sure. I know they're, they're looking to have some modifications, so it was completed on stormwater, or was approved originally for their stormwater. After reviewing some of the plans, their new engineer believed that some things were overbuilt from the previous engineer, and that's the reason going back in front of Concom to kind of address those issues.
So is there a revised plan?
I do not have a revised plan at this time from, from my office. I believe there's new stormwater calculations that Pat may have, and then there is a, the septic plan that Joe has more of. And then, all right, today, looking over the three different separate plans, the grading is different on each plan.
Three separate plans and the grading is different?
From the septic plan to what Concom has to what we have in our office.
I wasn't there when you guys approved it, the board in the past, but it just seems to me like they want you to sign an A and R and they come out with a plan, they say they're gonna do this, and then they don't do this, they wanna change it all later.
The, somehow I've heard this story before, many times. I, you know, I don't know what, at this point, I don't really remember what we approved. I don't know what they've built out there, and I don't know what they're asking for approval, so I, I have no comment on the whole thing at this time. You know, I, just in general, you know, I, these things are definitely difficult to deal with from our end. But when I go down Park Drive today, every one of those houses that's built, they paid for a paved road to be put in front of their house. Why should anybody be able to put a house on a road that's not built yet? Or a paved road that, that's not an, you know, most of the other subdivisions in town, all of them, in order to put the house up, you need to build the road. You know, so I mean, I, it's hard to draw the line. Well, do you let one house go on a gravel road and then the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and the next one? And then you get all these changes because the contractor wants to do it differently or, you know, the owner doesn't wanna pay for all the things that were on the plan, you know? I'm becoming less sympathetic to that story, I guess, it's a long-winded way of saying that. I mean, just keep in mind that when you go through these subdivisions today, those people paid for that paved road in front of their house that the town's gonna maintain, and maybe the next guy should pay for the same thing. And I know it's expensive, but that's the way it is if you wanna build a, put a new house up. And that's part of the issue that we're gonna be going through with, you know, the Conrad Richards thing, you know, off of Lake Street. You know, there, there's no road built.
All right, let's, all right, we talked about Morton Lane. We'll be advised that you'll probably see more down the line, get some more information regarding Morton Lane. Let's move on to the next discussion. This is a continuing discussion, A and R former plan access requirements. At the last meeting, Rick had brought up a few things that he would like us to be aware of. He brought up some court cases for some examples. Let's continue the discussion.
I mean, a lot of that leads into the couple of things that we're talking about tonight. You know, we've had, the hard line on it is that if you don't have the frontage on a road that's approved under subdivision control, or is a road... that's approved under subdivision control, or is a road that the clerk, uh, accepts as a public road. I'm on one of them. Lake Street is not an accepted road. That's a road in existence prior to subdivision control. Uh, I believe most of Keene Road is. Empire Peckham Road is also a road in existence or a way in existence prior to subdivision control. So they, they are out there, but if it's not, if it, if it wasn't in existence and used and built prior to subdivision control, the hard line is that you've got to go through the subdivision process. And, and, you know, with plans, with performance guarantees, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's the, that's really the, the, I believe, the legal line on it.
I agree, Morton Lane should have been dealt with as a form C. Even though the layout existed, be, only because then you could put a covenant, you know, on, you could put surety. So that road is built and you don't have a house before the road, just before the horse.
Yeah, that was the issue with, with the Richards subdivision off of Lake Street. There never was any performance guarantee or, or surety posted to guarantee construction of the roads within the subdivision. And, uh, it, it looks like of all the lots that they had worked out, I mean, none of them had frontage on Lake Street. And none of them actually, none of them had any frontage on any road that was in existence, constructed and utilized prior to subdivision control. I, I, I don't, I don't see any frontage there for any buildable lots, uh, you know, based on what I saw at the last meeting. I don't know what they're going to come up with next, but, you know, it's, it's going to be a never-ending procession of one of these tail-end-of-the-road situations after another. And I, I think we're, we're going to have to come up with a, some kind of a consensus on how to deal with them, you know, from here on out. It's, it's going to make some people very unhappy, I think, but, I.
So on the A and R, I didn't read your memo until I got home. And it was different than what we agreed to at the end of the meeting. I thought we were at the same page. That, like, for instance, the Joshua Ruda. I asked Doug if he could get us copies because I think that's, I want to make sure we're on the same page. Or no, if we're not, or if we're not on the same page.
That's fine. That's why, that's what, that's what.
So, I asked him to get a couple of samples planned so we could see if we're on the same page or not. And I thought one of them was, the perfect example was the Joshua Ruda. Because that one has, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was, it's a retreat lot. It was first, it was retreat lot development and, yeah, so, under this plan, you have three lots. One, two, three, with frontage on a public way. So, this lot, you gotta, you, the only access is through a common driveway. So, because of the common, are you saying in your write-up that this plan you would, how many lots would you consider as valid for?
That's, that's what the question is. You know, after, after going through that, that A and R handbook, I would consider a couple of those lots unbuildable today. You know, to be quite honest with you. It just, just literally, you know, does it have access to the frontage that provides, uh, a way to get into the building portion of the lot? And does that access way go all on the lot? You know, is it all on the lot all the way? And I, I, that, the way I understand what's been said in that A and R handbook, that's the criteria. You know, there.
I guess that's where we disagree because I read the handbook and it says, if there's a physical impairment, like a guardrail and a bluff off a highway, or there's no, you can't, you can't access a major highway like, uh, Route, uh, one ninety-five, that's not frontage. Or if there's a bluff with a guardrail, you can't physically, because it's such a huge gully or something, you can't physically get from A to B. But the caveat in, in, it was in that page forty-two, forty-seven, whatever it was. Talked about, you can cross a wetland and get a permit to cross a wetland to get the upland.
Yep.
And if you can do that.
If you can do that, you're all set. And, and I guess to, to take a step back, until there's a common driveway approval, a couple of those lots, uh, shouldn't be buildable lots. So I think they've better, they would, in this case, would have to get a common driveway approval first before a couple of those back lots were to be considered buildable lots.
Now we're going back on the same page. I agree with you. Because of the, the common driveway, the way your write-up says, basically, they would have one lot there. Because they have one rickety road that took it to the back. And the way, the way your bullet points were, that's one lot, that's a one-lot retreat subdivision. I look at it as black and white, that's three, so long as the common driveway is. If they had a fourth lot, if there was another one that had to go through massive wetlands, they're out of luck. Because they, they can only fill, they only get to the upland one time.
Yep.
I, I, I agree with that. I agree with that.
So like a plan like this, we could cover it by putting a note on it, the lots are not considered buildable until such time as a common driveway, special permit has been issued by the planning board under the subdivision rules of.
Yep, absolutely.
This was the test case.
And, and the, and the reason I said it the way I did is I don't want a potential, I, I don't want to see a potential buyer. I think they have something that they don't yet. And you, I mean, you know how these, these special permits go. The neighbors come out of the woodwork and, you know, they're not quite so easy as just going through the process. So, that's all. And, and maybe there needs to be another addition to that little write-up that I did. That says just what, what Dave said.
Yeah.
That, you know, the lots are not to, you know, lots requiring common driveways for access are not to be considered buildable until a special permit is issued by the planning board for that common driveway, which will serve as, uh, access to those lots.
I mean, that's what we kind of had for the, the last A and R we had from the Lake Street one, where we did require them putting a note on the plan, that these aren't to be considered buildable lots until a subdivision process.
And, and, and that's why I said it the way I did at the last meeting. And that, that way, you know, law may not make some people happy, at least it's clear.
Yep.
And it's, it'll be a consistent interpretation from, from here on out. And, uh, I would say, you know, for the rest of the members, you know, just, just think about what you want to do in the future on, I call them tail-end lots, but the, the one lot beyond the paved road.
Yeah, well, you have Morton Lane, there's, there's, you know, wetlands there, but there's a lot of land out there too. So there could be another guy that comes in for the.
Well, that's, if, if, if there's. A lot of town on land, it's town forest.
But there were, at one point, they had real, they, on the real estate market, they had three big lots.
Yeah, and that's on the, that'd be on the other side of the roadway.
The right side.
Yep.
Where they bought that first lot, there were two others on the market. Now, how much is wetland, I don't know.
Oh, in the entire, it's, it's wet. It's really wet.
It's, it's a weird wetland.
There's like, uh, acidic fern. There's, there, there's like a few, but Wet Meadow was out there, there was like a few different things.
But if that was upland, that's the perfect example of the first, if we go through the substantive subdivision, we can cover the first piece. Okay, you get gravel, the next person, you, now you got paved because you keep going and going and, you know, at what point do they have to repair the road upstream?
Absolutely.
Otherwise you're creating a potable mess.
And, and we, the percentage of lots that I've seen over the last two to four years, a lot of them, that's the situation. It's not just one out of every ten A and Rs are we dealing with that particular situation. It's half or better. You know, everything seems to be wetlands impacts, common driveways, you know, I.
Not all the good land's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're down to.
It's towns with the difficult ones. Okay, we're out on safety.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I didn't.
We good on that? We are happy. All right, next on the agenda, uh, town plan or updates? Doug sent out, uh, the last email that Doug sent out was, uh, the proof on the, uh.
Yeah, the finalized solar bylaw, or it's not finalized, it's the draft and please any comments or anything.
I think it looked pretty good, actually.
When did you send it?
Last night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, probably around like six o'clock.
We, we all had nothing else to do today, so.
Yeah, no, it was late, like, yep, yesterday was my due date to get it in for the warrant. So, and then now we have like a, a moving target date in order to be able to make adjustments to. And we have tentative public hearing scheduled for the twenty-second, twenty-nine to address those specific bylaws. There were numerous different things that I included in there. And definitely referenced what Hopkinton had approved, uh, previously because they were the most recent town to have a solar bylaw approved. Obviously, we can't deny, like, we can't deny it in any district. But there's certain things we can impose, like.
You can make big hoops.
Three acre.
I mean, just, just like.
Little hoops up to our.
But just like what we just saw, you know, we are entitled to look at things that affect the health and welfare of the adjacent property owners. And some guy getting his lawn run over for the, the one to two months it is going to take to clear that place off. And then getting laughed at when he wants something fixed, that's, that's a consideration. That's the health and welfare of the adjacent property owners. And, uh, between my, my last, uh, generation job, which involved commercial properties, I can tell you that guys in tractor trailers, a lot of them, they don't respect anything but an eight-foot diameter or an eight-inch diameter steel pole that sticks up, uh, six feet and looks like it will take out the side of their truck if they hit it. I can also tell you from my, my current employee, I have the same problem. Is there's a bunch of rocks up around my property right now, that, my rental property, that have been put there just because delivery guys have been running over patios and people's lawns and all that stuff. So I, not that the deliveries and, delivery guys and truckers are the, the, the worst of the world, but they have other considerations besides, uh, protecting the adjacent properties.
I think you just came up with a great idea for the, uh, the entrance, uh, steel ballons on both sides.
Well, I, I, I wasn't going to mention that just yet. You know, to be honest with you, if, if it was centered on that forty feet, I, I don't think it would be so much of an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's right on the edge of this guy's property, you know, and it's, it's quite, without some cir, some physical impediment there, his property's going to get run over.
Yeah, the fence.
Guarantee it.
The preconstruction.
Don't mind all the debris that's going to get knocked up.
Well, and again, I mean, well, they'd get free wood chips, but, you know, I.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the dust debris.
No, I, I, I.
Rocks sticking up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's no input.
I mean, they're, they want to get out and in there as quickly and as easily as possible.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, can you put, is there, uh, you put a restriction on the amount of clear cutting?
Yeah, that's what we're looking, I'm looking at currently within the bylaw.
You're talking about the solar field.
I was talking about solar, it's one way.
Yeah, so we're looking at anything that's larger than a foot in diameter. I, I'm going to have to go back and adjust some.
Yeah, I, sorry to interrupt. I, I, I read through this.
Yeah, you did too.
Eighty percent of it, it's quite a bit there. And Doug has really found just about everything that could be found to be put in there, restrict.
He emailed it, I'll give you.
Honestly, I think the easiest way is just buffer zones.
Oh, no, not.
You know, I mean, there's no, this, what the Attorney General said when they reviewed Hopkin, Hopkinton's bylaw is that, yes, it's okay, but if you use that to prevent solar arrays from going in, then it may be overturned, you know, that, that disapproval. So I, I think what, 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 what they were saying is that if you're going to disapprove one, and it, and it goes beyond affecting the health and welfare of the town and the adjacent property owners, you're, you're going to get overturned. Or the judge is going to send it back to you and say, uh, we think you need to reconsider this. That's all.
Well, once the bylaw, what happened, once the bylaw, what, the bylaw gets approved, that's your guideline, right? You can.
From the point of it's approved at the town meeting, it also has to get, go to the Attorney General and they.
They agree with you, and that's it.
I, I mean, we can, we can say in our town bylaw or that all new building lots have got to be over five acres. But that's going to go, that's going to get disputed legally. And there's already a couple of cases on file that if you go much beyond, if you go beyond three acres, there, it's going to be overturned.
Right, I understand.
You know, so it, it now becomes the line of how much legal liability do you want to put the town in when, when you do these things? You know, and, and, and these legal, you know, when you're talking about big dollar items, they're willing to put up a lot in, in lawyer's fees. Look at what's happened at the, at the quarry.
Yeah.
And then that in turn requires the town to put up big money, uh, to, to defend against it. So, that's the other part of that. It's not quite as simple as you make the law, sorry, you're, you're disapproved. You know, twenty-five percent coverage with solar array panels only, could you get away with that? I don't know, maybe not.
No, I mean, and, and like I said, we addressed a lot of the issues in terms of setbacks. So like a minimum frontage of three hundred, three hundred feet, side and rear setbacks, a minimum of a hundred fifty feet. If you fall within five hundred foot of any roadway or any, any private way, that would require glare analysis, visual, the actual visual of what that would look like on the site, um, creating renderings of what the solar field's going to look like out there. A minimum of three acres in order to be able to do this, like I, I tried to cover all of our bases on this, so. Just making, like I said, concerned about the health and welfare of the town and making sure that everybody's happy at the end of the day.
I mean, that, that thing that we've been talking about, that A and R.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That's almost ninety pages long.
Yeah, there is a lot, there's a lot.
There is one line in the subdivision, the state subdivision control law, that it says, and I'm going to try to quote it as closely as I can. A and R approval shall not be withheld unless it shows a subdivision. That's it. There's fifty-plus years of court history, you know, court battles about whether the, the planning board should sign an A and R plan or not. And all different instances and caveats and, and. My best understanding of it is that when we sign an A and R plan, we are saying that that lot has, quote, vital access. And through the years, the court has decided vital access means you can turn off the street and drive through the lot that you're creating to get to your house. That's, that's, that's the way I understand it, that, of what vital access is. So, there are going to be court cases relative to this stuff. I'm, I'm not anxious to make it a slam dunk for the people who come in and want to put the solar arrays in. That's all. I, I'd be quiet.
Also, also, Doug sent out a rezoning bylaw for consideration.
This isn't a Bradford Street area, this is the one we had at last, at the last town meeting. And I think the, the big confusion there was that it's a thirteen to, uh, yeah, thirteen to fifteen buildable lots. And realistically, that's not the case, it's not, not what is occurring out there. Number of cars that travel up Pembroke Ave is not going to be impacted by the addition of three houses. And that's exactly what it is, is three-house lots.
Yeah.
Wasn't it both sides though, Pembroke?
Yeah, yeah, no, it is.
Is it still the same?
Yes.
Both sides, okay. How many, have you nailed down how many lots could actually be built?
Three.
Three, okay. They also, I think, were on the wrong night for that.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, like, everything, it was kind of a contentious town meeting to be in there.
Everything was tabled and it was a table. Table routine, it was like, I felt bad for them.
Yeah, realistically, this is, this is to just create greater conformity for the residential village districts. It, residential village district was created pretty much because there's water and sewer connection points in pretty much the entire area. There's a water connection, there's sewer connection that goes further up Pembroke Ave even past Bradford Street. So it's just kind of addressing those issues, rectifying those, those zoning concerns, um, and creating greater conformity overall.
Any questions? You want to talk about the long-range planning?
Yeah, okay, now that I have. Yeah, okay, now that I have off the zoning stuff and have a little bit more time to focus in on the master plan, open space recreation plan. So I know it's been a bit thrown around about doing an update. And realistically, we can't just do an update on the master plan, it has to be a complete overhaul of the master plan. The vision and the goals that the community has for the next ten years. It also addresses specific zoning and bylaw regulations that can be enacted. And when, and when and if a new master plan is adopted, within two to three years it's adopted, those zoning and bylaw changes need to be effective or be, or we need to take action on them immediately. And then to expect, I'm, I'm more than willing to try to go in and do it myself, but realistically, that's not realistic at the end of the day. I mean, I'm a wealth of, wealth of knowledge to be able to provide information on a cushion and, and be able to do surveys, hold public hearings, do all those different things to get community feedback in. But when it comes to the down and dirty court parts of it, that's where it's advantageous to have Serpeta in on it or another outside company that specializes in doing master plans. So my overall goal here, considering our open space and recreation plan, I'm pretty sure is from two thousand and three, if I remember correctly. The master plan's from two thousand and eight, our housing plan is from two thousand and nineteen, and that expires next year. And then I don't believe we even have an economic development plan. So since we're gonna have an economy of scale at the time to do the master plan, the plan is to undertake those other ones. Because once the master plan's completed, there's a lot of elements that are, are within the master plan that can be utilized for the other ones. And then that just kinda creates a framework for our board, Board of Selectment or any other committee, commission, you name it, to be able to make decisions on what the community wants to see moving forward, so. And I've already started preparing the RFP. Once that's finalized, I'll, I'll send it out to all the board members.
What does the RFP go to to get, like, how far do we fan out to try and solicit?
So what I'd like to do is specifically the New England region. So we'd be looking at Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island. I'm pretty familiar with a few companies other than Serpeta that do specialize in doing master plans and just reviewing some of the work over the past year for other communities, not just alone in Massachusetts, but for New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine. There's other companies out there that are extremely well-qualified and could potentially be a benefit for the community in producing one of these plans. And, I mean, just heading in the right direction, especially with MBTA coming and how we wanna see our community look like once that is here.
Just that number that you talked about just seemed so crazy.
The, oh, yeah, so it's, I can touch on that a little bit, yes. No, no, so my, just like generally speaking, for the MBTA requirements are gonna be passed down from the state. So once the train is built in, I guess it's still scheduled to finish in fall of twenty twenty-three. So once that is finalized, it is built, there's trains operating out of there, that qualifies as a cushion as an abutting community to an MBTA host community. So essentially what that means is we would have to rezone for ten percent of that, ten percent of the total housing stock. Which my understanding from the last figures I looked at, it was about four hundred to four hundred and ten units. Further, the zoning regulations that either they're suggesting or, suggesting or requiring at this point would be fifteen units per acre. And it would have, there is no age limitation on them, they have to be accommodating for families.
So you have to rezone ten percent of your town?
You don't have to, but essentially if we don't, that disqualifies us from numerous different grant opportunities through the state. And we're talking about like infrastructure grant opportunities, like big, big potential grant opportunities for us to do like bigger projects around town and kind of alleviate the tax, tax burden on the residents.
When you say ten percent, you're not talking land coverage, you're talking ten percent of the.
Housing stock, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, I mean, it, it's not limited, like, we, we can't put like an age restriction in there, but let's say a developer doesn't wanna come and do age qualified housing, wonderful, that counts towards our subsidized housing inventory stock. I'd take that any day, if they wanna be able to do that, we can have that rezoned and it would just be the, I guess, overall what I'm looking at is to be able to do like an MBTA rezoning, overlay district, and specifically have that located in this portion of the town down here, where we already have a similar, it's already denser than a lot of the other areas and remaining.
Well, you need sewer.
Sewer and water connection points. But beyond that, if, if a developer's coming in and they're gonna be extending sewer and water lines.
Sure.
And they're willing to pay for that.
Yeah.
Then by all means.
That's true, yeah.
And I mean, that would also positive tax revenue.
How many units are in the town? What does the ten percent represent? I'm just curious.
Last I checked, it was over.
Four thousand?
Yeah, it was around like four thousand to four thousand five hundred.
Yeah, so you're talking about four, four, fifty units.
Yeah.
It's a lot of units.
Yep.
A lot of impact in the school, fire, everything. And it's a lot of things to consider.
Yep. No, I spoke with.
Is there, is there even enough upland that you could put? Well, it comes out, what are you gonna do?
It has to be, it just has to be rezoned, they do not have to be built.
Okay, I mean, I just.
We just have to zone for it, they do not have to be built.
Okay.
Now, that's subjective, just. Yeah. Cause you, you know, you have a five-acre piece of land over there and so in theory you could put, oh, there's a number to it though, like fifteen units per acre or something like that, okay.
Like, that's what, that has to be accommodated.
Five times fifteen, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, that makes sense.
And I mean, it has to be considered buildable land. So it can't just be in the middle of a wetland and we're like, okay, this is gonna be the MBTA overlay district.
Build over the Kuschner row?
I'm not, I'm not sure if there's four hundred and fifty single-family house lots out there right now.
They don't say, they didn't say they have to be. That was, that's the, that's the thing, he said, we say fifteen units per acre. You're not gonna, you know, that's a, that doesn't, you're not gonna give me fifteen single families.
Take four hundred and fifty divided by fifteen and that's how many acres of good upland that you need. That you can feasibly do fifteen acres for fifteen units per acre. That's a challenging number.
It's thirty acres. That's, that's a lot of.
Yeah, I know.
That's a lot of upland.
Oh, I know, I've been looking at this a lot.
It's equal to what they're gonna clear out almost.
Yeah, that's kinda overall what's happening in my world right now, just trying to figure all that out.
So what is the number for the master plan? I'm just curious. Is there like a, is there like a range where you think it's gonna fall within?
So what I wanna go out to, like, until I know I have the funds appropriate, I don't wanna go out for any proposals at this time. But I ideally would like to be in the hundred twenty-five K range to be able to approach any company or be able to put in the RFP. This is what we're looking to have done, these are specific qualifications we're looking for. And then from there, just receive what we can get.
Oh, that's a big number.
I mean, just for reference, for Haven, that their master plan, two thousand and nineteen, they went out to bid, I wanna say it was around a hundred fifteen to a hundred twenty K, and that was just to do the master plan and open space recreation plan.
Okay, they're one point five, one point six times the size of our town, so does it, does that factor?
Yeah, it'll definitely factor in, but the, the fact we're adding the additional housing plan and economic development.
You're trying to roll, yeah, you're, that number you're talking about, all these other plans.
It's gonna do all, it'll do all, hit all four of them. That's what I'm looking to do, cause if we were, okay, let's say we just do the master plan now, then, okay, a year or two later, we go out to do the open space recreation plan, we're gonna be.
Thirty, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So while we already have the economy of scale, let's just do it all at once. And limit, like we, like I said, we already were able to secure twenty-five thousand through our state representative in this area. There is another twenty-five thousand, pretty sure we were able to get through the, the house, the state house in Massachusetts. And then a lot of funds that aren't utilized in CPC, we're gonna be able to utilize as, in certain elements of the master plan.
Yeah, the housing is part of the CPC, yeah. Sounds good.
To move it forward, at town meeting, it's gonna have to be somebody from the planning board and somebody from the Board of Selectment that's in favor of it. You say a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're, you're not gonna get it unless both boards make a pitch for it.
No, I, I think the pitch is gonna be for, I think it's seventy-five thousand from the CPC. And we're already given, I think it was already approved through the CPC to do eighty thousand to the Buzzard Bay Coalition for some preservation land that they're looking to acquire. So my understanding is it's looking somewhat decent right now. The CPC had approved the funds for it, it's just a matter of moving forward from there and having everything appropriated out with the Board of Selectment and then from there, town, town meeting.
Sounds like a better use of the funds. Is that what you're saying?
In my, in my opinion, yes, cause I mean, like that, like anytime we have an election or there's a changeover in, in management, as you put it, and like somebody comes in and not necessarily know exactly what the, what the goals are for the community moving forward, well, it's easy, just read what we have there, this is the direction we wanna take the community right now and for the next ten years, and then make your decisions based off of that. Cause I mean, there's a lot that can occur year to year, that there's changes of powers, there's changes of numerous different things.
Okay, a lot of information. No new business, no other business. Anybody wanna add anything to this meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting, how about that?
Any second?
Second, yeah.
All in favor? Thank you very much, goodnight.